Okay, six o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Pastor Cruz, if you would give us our invocation.
Let us pray. Kind gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful evening you've given us. We thank you now for our elected officials as they come together to conduct business for our city. We ask your blessings upon them and that you'd give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Understanding that every decision had ratifications. And we just ask you that the decisions that are made will be the just and the right. We ask you to bless our first responders. We ask you to be with our police and keep them safe on duty. We ask you to watch over our fair city. And we thank you for our many blessings. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. Item number three, adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Alrighty. Item number four, approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay, any comments from attendees tonight?
Hello, everyone. My name is Esko Latimer. All right, just keep me precise, just keep me on track here. All right. First of all, good evening, council members. I'd like to take a moment to sincerely thank the city council for your continued support, particularly regarding the cleanup initiative organized on Highway 74. I also want to extend my appreciation to the city administration, John and McKenzie, including new leadership in Lowe's Corporate. They generosity gave us about $2,000 worth of equipment. For about $700, I had to add to that purchase. So that was huge on their part. It was a collective involvement and an effort to make this happen, so the city council and administration, as well as facilities who brought that together. And then something got disconnected. While the cleanup didn't go exactly as I envisioned it, I am proud of what we accomplished. You know, and as a Marine, we've learned to adapt and overcome. I know you gotta learn about that there. But the mindset, that's the mindset that got me through the whole project. I'm committed to having at least one person show up, and I ended up having two. And that was me and my fiance, Sonia. She focused on the trash pickup while I handled the grass cutting. And I removed approximately 100 pounds of topsoil just from that half a block. So that gorilla cart came in handy with the lawnmower. The topsoil buildup was, had created a hazardous situation by pushing water, stormwater out into the road. This is especially kind of dangerous during the winter months when the water freezes and increases the risk of accidents, particularly for drivers with worn tires. I personally witnessed these vehicles kind of hydroplaning down that road several times, which I'm hoping that that can be addressed maybe later on down the road. I want to make sure everyone gets their recognition here. Again, let me recognize Mr. Robert Brown and his facilities for his crucial support. He dispatched two staff members to assist with the cleanup, and their help made a significant difference. And thank you again, John and McKenzie, for your response in this. Once I emailed them, they were quick to act and send someone out. We had someone out there about 12 o'clock. I got it about 7:30. It was about that time for them to come in, and they did a great job on that. So thank you again for all of that. I did anticipate a few volunteers who were unable to attend. I was prepared with a contingency plan. I reached out to the local veteran support group and two county commissioners, who saw the video of me cleaning up the 74 corridor, and since then had expressed interest probably in a future cleanup. So kudos to that. To everyone with this initiative, and everyone who's kind of watching right now online, please stay connected with me on Facebook, it's Esko Latimer, where you can see updates on my upcoming cleanups and the next event, but probably a smaller scale, perhaps a block or half a block, depending on the conditions of that block. And the last site was kind of a significant buildup. There was a lot of grass in there, so I was having to break through topsoil to get that done. But I was able to get that done. I also want to give a special thanks again to Sonia, my fiance, for her dedication and hard work. She was my spot man to make sure I didn't get hit by any cars. She was also my camera lady, and she was a trash. She had three jobs, you know, so thank you to her. And I know you're watching this online, so thank you very much. And for all the people who waved and honked, and for the encouragement, thank you for that. Next time I only ask that you throw out maybe some bottled waters and some ibuprofen. Apparently, I'm running low on those. That was a, that was a hard job. Two, 500 milligrams possibly. And I understand that that section of corridor is the DOT. I understand that. However, my hope is that we continue to raise awareness about the efforts to improve the appearance of our community. It is, if the county commissioners and the city is going to work hard to bring people here, I think it's also the responsibility that we have a city that's inviting, and it shows exactly what we represent and the ideas of where we're trying to go. That's my long-term vision for the cleanups, to gain institutional support, whether that means the DOT conducting regular maintenance or allocating resources to the city of Hamlet to manage that stretch of road. This is just the beginning of a broader effort. And in closing, I'd like to thank all of you for your time and taking the time to hear me today. I want to make sure if I missed anyone, or I missed anyone online that came out and honked the horns, thank you, thank you, and thank you.
What's the corridor, what area? Just a picture of what?
Okay, so from Crawford Law Firm on 74 all the way down to Axon Grinds is what I'm trying to get clean, get those gutters cleaned up. One of the, my gutter side is cleaned up because I've already cleaned it, but the other side was kind of backed up, so that water pushes out. So in the wintertime, when people are doing 35-ish over that hill, they kind of lose control, the ones that have the really bad tires. We had a, we had a bad accident. There was a police chase, and that's what happened. Thank you.
Thank you for your time in starting to clean up that area.
Thank you. My back thanks you too.
Do we have any other comments tonight? Mr. Morrison, how are you?
Good. How are you, Mayor? Council?
I say, brother.
Good. How you doing, that brother Sellers?
Doing well.
Brother, oh. Last, my last month, April, Jazz Awareness Month. I forgot to say that when I was up in here, but I wanted to make sure we have Jazz Awareness Month here. And this month is also Asian and Pacific and Islander Awareness Month. So I want to make sure with the growing populations that we are representing and recognizing all of Hamlet and all of Richmond County. And lastly, just want to invite you all out. John Coltrane Fest, October 4th, first Saturday in October every year. Love to see y'all there. Now, that's a record, isn't it, Amy?
Thank you, sir.
October the 4th, you're on.
Always the first Saturday.
That was kind of short and sweet.
All right. Do we have anyone else?
What say, brother Don?
Name is Don Norton, ones that don't know. Oh, just the fairgrounds down here, does the city trim those limbs up off those big trees? They're so big, they're bending down to the dirt.
I'm sure we can.
Inside the fairground, down the sidewalk.
No, inside, inside. Also, when they cut the field, they only cut half the field at a time. They don't cut the rest of them. And the fence hasn't been weeded in over a year.
Down the fairgrounds.
At the fairgrounds.
And we have the equipment to do that, don't we, Donald? I think we do.
They used to. I don't know what they got, what they got now.
They cut all the way around. Be nice too if we could get that creek cleaned up. That's a very beautiful, we could, there's so much potential in that fairgrounds.
Well, especially when football starts practicing, you know, they don't cut it. It's just grass kids running out there. It needs to be cut all the way to the creek. It used to be kept cut, but it's done around there, just cut half of it.
I agree.
We'll tell the appropriate departments about that.
We'll look into it. Lately, we've been focused on the city lake cleanup and getting back there. I'm not sure, Alan, were you able to get the crew back there yet with the Charlotte Street issue and some of the other issues going on? We're a little backed up, but we will continue to strive for a better cleanup.
Yeah, I mean, they cut, they cut the field, they only cut half of it. I mean, when you should just go in, finish cutting the rest of it.
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, all.
Anyone else? If not, we will move on. Okay.
I did forget one thing, if it's okay. The, I want to get clarity. The person that's putting the signs up for nuisance code enforcement, is that part of the police department, or is that planning and zoning?
He is code enforcement, but he is also a police officer.
Okay. Because in the criteria about how they do that, or maybe in the planning and zoning meeting, when we do have one, maybe we can go over it?
There's personnel changes that are up. We're actually going to talk about them tonight, but yes, typically you would see code enforcement. It depends on the municipality, but you would either see code enforcement either in the police department, or you would see it under planning.
Okay. Because I've been watching the, I've seen the signs that say nuisance, the blue and white signs. I'm just wondering how they're selecting properties, because there's some other properties that have been no windows, no doors, commercial buildings, and we talk about growth and jobs, and they don't have nuisance signs. I just want to make sure it's going across the board for everybody.
There's certain stipulations on nuisance when it comes statutorily, but also, you know, what the city is currently lacking and we're using from out of the county, but they don't help us on this part of building inspections is what's called order of abatement and condemnations. So we've talked about this in depth, where our properties that we have are under nuisance. We can move forward with those, but it is much more streamlined process when it's under a building inspector that can condemn and do order of abatement processes.
Yes. Caution on the nuisances and the abatements. On those charges, usually when folks are going through that, it is some challenges. I want to make sure with inflation and other stuff that we do show some mercy and grace with that. But biggest thing though is if we're doing it, I just want to make sure it's no disparities across the board.
Yes, sir.
All right, new business. Item number six is the annual professional municipal clerk's week proclamation. Whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is a time-honored and essential part of local government, serving communities throughout the world, and whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is one of the oldest public service positions, integral to the foundation and continuity of local governance, and whereas professional municipal clerks provide a vital link between citizens, local governing bodies, and various agencies at all levels of government, and whereas professional municipal clerks are committed to upholding principles of neutrality, impartiality, and equal service to all members of the community, and whereas the office of professional municipal clerk serves as the information hub for local government operations and community affairs, and whereas professional municipal clerks continuously strive to enhance the administration of their office by actively participating in educational programs, professional development opportunities, and the annual conference of their state, county, and international associations, and whereas it is fitting to recognize and celebrate the significant contributions and accomplishments of professional municipal clerks. Now therefore, I, Amy Gwynne, Mayor of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim the week of May 4th through May 10th as professional municipal clerk's week, and extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Heather Hawks, along with all professional municipal clerks for their invaluable service and steadfast dedication to the communities they serve. So thank you, Heather. Item number seven, resolution 2025-09. Am I reading this?
No, you don't have to read it. I'll brief it. So after speaking with our consultants at Code Right Planners, we were informed of several harmful pieces of legislation that have recently been introduced in the General Assembly that would ultimately undermine the authority of municipalities to conduct their planning duties. So under their recommendation, we drafted this resolution to oppose the legislation. The resolution currently addresses House Bill 765 and its counterpart in Senate, Senate Bill 688. This bill restricts or takes away the ability for citizens to participate in planning and zoning processes. It also opens the door for elected and appointed officials to face possible legal retributions for their decisions, and it generally usurps our current city planning and zoning ordinance as well. The resolution also opposes House Bill 1009 and its Senate counterpart, Senate Bill 314. This one repeals the city's authority in the ETJ, essentially taking it away entirely. So it limits the ability of the city to regulate and plan for development that would be right outside our city limits. So we're just looking for approval, and then this resolution will join several other municipalities that have passed similar resolutions.
I'd like to ask Mr. Morfus a question. Is this all, this resolution is all comply with the legalities of everything pertaining to this opposition that we're getting ready to approve?
Absolutely, Mr. Morrison. It's a good question. So council's free to adopt a non-binding resolution on just about any topic under the sun, and I'll tell you, because we represent a lot of local governments, that I think these types of resolutions are important. The General Assembly right now, for whatever reason, is entertaining a lot of bills that go beyond sort of what's the limits of good government, what should local government be doing, to really affecting some of your core land use regulation authority. And that's what Assistant Manager Webb was talking about. It's a concern for a lot of local governments. Just as one example, the bills would not amend or change ETJ authority, it'd just do away with it entirely. Remember, that's your ability to do planning and zoning outside your corporate limits. There's some other things, and this follows on the heels of legislation that was adopted last year without any debate, and it was tucked into a budget bill that has affected a lot of local government zoning authority. So I think it's a little bit different if you're trying to actively lobby, or you're trying to, you know, fight for local legislation, but just a general resolution opposing certain legislation, I think that's very much part of the democratic process, and I think it's a good idea in this case.
Okay. Obviously, our city manager is opposed to this legislation from the legislators. Is that correct?
Yes, Councilmember Morrison. Completely, myself and McKenzie have been in close coordination with Code Right, who's writing our unified development ordinance for us currently. And through this, we identified the House bills and the Senate bills that were currently being reviewed. Those are the ones I sent to council for you all to review, specifically with the ones highlighted that have some detrimental effects on municipal planning and zoning, and really just taking away our ETJ in its entirety, which is not really appropriate in my eyes. But this comes from our builders and our developers that, you know, they have quite large pockets, and they end up going up, hiring lobbyists. The lobbyists there help them develop these bills and push them through. What we don't have is a lot of resolutions opposing these bills, and that's the intent or part of what Chad Meadows from Code Right is doing, is collecting as many as he can to go up and lobby for municipalities.
And the other thing I'd add is that over the past year or so, I won't say the process is broken, but what has historically happened is you have lots of bills that get filed, you know, a lot of different views, and as these things start going through the league of municipalities, lobbies, and behalf of local governments, and often local legislators will call up the manager or the mayor and say, what do y'all think of this? And some of that's not happening. That's what, it didn't happen last fall, and so I think there's a concern that if there's not more speaking out and articulating our concerns, that these things may just get passed without really getting input from local government.
With that being said, motion in order?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we go on record as a council to approve, to oppose these legislature bills that are before the legislature at this time.
I second.
Do we need to approve the resolution? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So do we need to reword that a little?
Well, okay, I'll.
I oppose it. I second your motion.
Yeah, right, but we have to oppose, or oppose the, not oppose the resolution, but to approve the legislation to oppose it.
Yeah, correct. Yes, sir.
All right. And you're a second, Oscar.
I'll go second.
All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Next item, Hamlet recommended org chart by department.
Hold on just a second. Apologize, floundering. Counsel, I've reviewed our current org chart, where, from the best of my knowledge, and doing my best I could to put it together, is eligible as possible from the old one. I noticed that we had six elected officials, one city attorney, 12 city officials, and then 86 employees. Please don't quote me on those numbers, because our previous task orgs were not very solid, and they were not very legible. So what I did is I went through and what proposed changes to our entire city's task org, wanted to bring this up for a motion to approve or discuss, or if council deems not necessary, disapprove. But the new task org going forward, it is several slides, but bottom line, what I would like to do is change the task org to where it's six elected officials, one city attorney, 11 city officials, and that was just really a grammatical error where we had a manager listed as a, as a, as a city official, but is actually more of a supervisor, and then down to 81 employees. This is all in addition to trying to finalize our budget for FY 2526, and this is all in our proposed budget currently. So in order for me to solidify that and bring it up in front of council, I wanted to make sure that this is either approved or make changes as necessary. A couple of things that we're in desperate need of, one is a finance tech entry level. That doesn't really affect our budget, and I'll define that a little bit more as we go through. We would like to move our code enforcement position from the police department under the planning department slash assistant city manager, which has been discussed with Chief of Police, and he is in concurrence, he actually recommended it. We would like to take our two part-time IT specialists, one for the police department and one for the city, and turn it into one full-time IT specialist. That actually saves us a little bit of money, too. Our human resources department doesn't change, we have Ms. Benita as our director. Our public works department would change slightly. And where you see pending final sanitation contract, we'll discuss sanitation as well, but this is pending the final contract if we were to outsource with Tetter. We're also looking to add one fleet mechanic to help with our fleet, because they are desperately in need of somebody to help them with repairing vehicles. And then that utility field tech is actually a position, there used to be Mr. Allen's position under the utility field as the superintendent, he was bumped up to the assistant public works position, or assistant public works director, and we're asking that his old position gets split into two full-time positions. It was a higher-paid position, we want to turn it into two entry-level positions. If I start confusing anybody, please stop me here. Into one utility field tech, and then back up to that finance tech one. I'm going to continue going through this. If there's any questions, please stop me. Chief of, our chief police and the police department, I've discussed this with Chief Police Brown in depth, we were only off by one person on recommendations. He wanted to have a second, or I'm sorry, a third detective, a detective lieutenant, a detective, and then a second detective. I'm recommending for this budget and this upcoming year with the budget restraints that we do have, that we keep it as the current detective lieutenant and detective that we have without adding the additional detective. Outside of that, both of us had the exact same recommendation. We were on the same page there. Fire department doesn't change at all. One city official, 14 employees, and then they have their volunteers as well. Buildings and grounds, there's no changes to this one. Still have Doc running it, horticulture crew, which we moved recently under Doc, and then his maintenance tech and custodian. Our economic and community engagement department, which would be Ms. Michelle Pressler and her assistant, nothing changes here, and our senior city manager and admin assistant. So no changes here, just a little bit of a title adjustment, some more responsibilities for Ms. Pressler. This is where you see that finance tech, where our current finance director is, she is, the only word that I can think to describe about how much that she works and what she's, what she's thinking. And it's tough for one person to do what she is doing on a daily basis, and she's working on the weekends, and I think bringing in just one person at entry level would help her a lot, just to do accounts payable. And then again, our code enforcement IT specialist. Then Parks and Rec Department doesn't change. And that is my recommendations for the city organizational chart. Any questions? This is something that we believe that would work well for the city. It decreases our funding, and it increases our capabilities overall. Any questions?
Anybody have questions? Discussion?
I have a question. We've got a lot of assistance in each and every department. Has the city grown that much that we, all the department heads and all that need all these assistants?
I believe that with what we are dealing with on a daily basis and the amount of work that's being complete by our department heads, I've went as far as I could and recommended changes in every place that I could to not affect the city and its daily operations.
Well, the former city manager, the one that brought all this up, and increasing all the salaries and all, but somewhere, the money has to come in. Can, you're talking about on the budget, where can the?
I am 100% on the same page with you, Councilmember Sellers. 100% see eye to eye with you on this, and I believe that we're in a position where there was a lot of growth over the last four years, but we grew too fast. And now I'm looking at ways to get the numbers right, maintain the same operational capability, but decrease our overall fiscal budget annually, if that makes sense. And I think that if we cut too many positions too fast, number one, it's going to affect, it's going to affect people. And this current, this current organization chart recommendation does not affect any full-time employees. It maintains all of our full-time employees. Anything that it does affect is a part-time employee that is already retired, and they're working extra, extra hours. So again, cutting out some of those positions, another example is, is right now, we don't think we need to fill Pat Maples' old position, the part-time horticulturist. We need to get that horticulturist department, and like some of our attendees have said, up to running 100 miles per hour and doing what we're, what the city and the taxpayers are paying them to do on a daily basis. So we want to focus on what we have, reevaluate, adjust as necessary, but we think that, we believe that going forward, that this organizational chart will just, will do that. And it, you know, again, like... And it, you know, again, like, these positions are able to, we're able to discuss them and make changes throughout the year as necessary. I'm a little bit more conservative on the personnel side because I like to see people work hard. And if we can get the numbers down to where people are really striving on a daily basis and putting in that effort, then I think that we're in a good position. And again, I think this recommended organizational chart will do this. If we did adopt this as it stands, it would not go into effect until 1 July with our adopted budget.
And that comes in, it just makes me question, do we need more people? Is more better, or do we need better management? That's the question that you ask, and it comes to you.
With me being here just three and a half, almost four months, council member Sellers, I would say that, you know, I, as the, as the city manager and evaluate our employees on a daily basis, and specifically our department heads and their assistants is who I have more contact with. But I see our employees out there working on a daily basis, is there room for improvement? Of course. Is there room for growth? Of course. Will we get there? As long as you got me here, we'll be striving towards that.
Well, that's, yeah, sometimes more isn't better.
Yeah.
You know?
Completely agree.
So John, the green and the yellow doesn't necessarily mean additions, like new jobs?
They're kind of, like the code enforcement was in the police department. The IT specialist, we had in two, two part-time positions, and I'm asking for one position. The finance tech, 100% a new position, 100% a new position. It's necessary. But we've cut in other places in order to, in order to try to make an org chart that works for everybody.
That's the only new position?
No, there's a-
Oh, the fleet.
Fleet mechanic as well. And what this doesn't account for is the pending final sanitation contract. So if we did accept that, go into contract, finalize it, then we would, those positions would either get repurposed into unfilled positions, or I think Tetter's here, actually, they are very interested in absorbing those positions as well. And I believe, let me just double check. Yeah, that was, that was the only, the finance tech and the fleet mechanic are the only new positions. But we are still overall downsizing from 86 employees to 81 employees. And none of that comes at the cost of current employees that are currently unfilled positions or part-time positions in the police department.
Well, I would say here on the public works department, on the fleet manager, are, is two fleet mechanics, is that enough to service and keep all our vehicles going? Don't we need two? I mean, that's, one, we're double working.
The manager needs to work, too. The manager needs to work, too.
That's right. Get their hands dirty, that's what they do.
Right now, what you do have is you have Brian that's working down there as the fleet manager. And he has a full-time employee, but that full-time employee, and not to get into personnel matters, but is not here on a daily basis. But the amount of work that they have to do on a daily basis is too much for one person on some days and two on other days.
Well, it just seems like just one, with all the vehicles we've got and all this, it'd be tough, tough to keep it up, to keep it safely.
I think that when it comes to fleet management, it's an absolutely necessary capability because it does reduce costs. If we're taking our vehicles on a daily basis to the mechanics, we're getting upcharged, right? Where our mechanics are doing it at their, at the cost of their salary and then, and then just the, not, no cost of labor, just the cost of parts and service. So, yeah, I think in the future, as the city grows and the city is going to continue to grow, I think that's without a doubt, the fleet mechanics will have to continue to increase. Our police department will have to increase, our fire department will have to increase. Are we there right now? And again, I'm a little bit more conservative, I think, than the previous city manager when it comes to numbers and fiscal, or monetary responsibility for the city and the taxpayers. I think this is a, is a good start to where we don't affect people's personal lives, number one.
Well, keeping the fleet manager, you know, it's very important to keep the vehicles, all the vehicles safe.
That's right.
And then you're protecting the city and the citizens on it. But I think that's very important to make sure that they're all safe and made it on.
Yes, sir.
So what do you need tonight, John?
I'm sorry?
What do you need tonight? You need to, this, do you need-
What I would like-
Tonight, or what do you?
Is a motion to approve or a motion to deny or a motion to approve with adjustments.
And this is just a question, should we do this during our work session while we're doing the budget?
I personally would like to approve this beforehand, so that way I can finalize budget numbers. Because what I'm looking at is overall revenues, what, those are locked in minus two things, which I'll talk about shortly. And then bouncing off expenditures off of that, and I cannot finalize our numbers until our organizational chart is finalized.
And I'd add, Mr. Stewart, if council were to approve the revised org chart, it's just the org chart, it doesn't commit you to new positions, that's part of the budget process.
And also, what we talked about, you remember those extra, what Robert Brown would be doing? Is that a part of this? Didn't, remember we discussed that? Extra things that his department might be taking on? How long ago did we talk about that?
Yeah, well, what they done was they took the horticulture half of Roberts and give it to Doc.
To Doc, that's already identified in here.
Yeah, that's already changed.
Right here, council member Stewart.
All right, good.
See, the horticulture part left out from under Robert and went to Doc. Doc didn't have enough to do, he needed something else to do.
With his 46 buildings.
And of course, this in no way makes the decision on the sanitation.
No, no, and that, that's one of the agenda items, too, to talk about going forward. So this is more in preparation for final budget adoption to give me good guidance so that I can finalize numbers and Ms. Edna can as well.
I'm going to go back to the horticulture department. Doc's got all these buildings on that, do we need, that's putting an awful lot of load, being a horticulturist, plus taking care of all these buildings. Now, I'm going to speak up, Doc, tell me if I'm out of, I'm not trying to put you in the spotlight, but that's kind of putting a load on Doc. I mean, a big load on him, so why?
I believe it's Doc, it was Doc's idea, right?
Is that your idea to take it over?
Yeah.
All right.
See, he's got grounds on the buildings, so that helps him-
That helps it all.
To control the guys that take care of the grounds.
I just wanted to meet, I just wanted to make sure that he understood, but if it's his request, go for it.
We've talked about it in depth and he had brought it to me originally, and I have full faith in Doc.
Oh, sure.
I mean, you all see him on a daily basis.
Does a great job, I mean, does a great job, and he does, that's what I kept it at. I just didn't want to overload the man.
Neither do I, but he was very adamant, he wanted that horticulture department.
There's just so much one man can do.
All right, do we have a motion?
Wait a minute, I had, I want to discuss an item on this before we get into a motion. I agree with everything the city manager said with all these changes and additions, and one thing or another, I have no problem. This may sound petty, but this same situation came up with the last city manager we had, and I had the same, I don't want to say argument, but same reason for not wanting the organizational chart changed or approved until such time that we verified a situation. Now, the city charter, Hamlet City Charter authorizes and gives the duty of the city council to appoint city clerk, city manager, city attorney. And on the organizational chart, it shows that the mayor and council at the top, which it should be, city attorney under them, and to the right of that, in my opinion, should be city attorney. Because we're authorized and required to hire these three people, the city manager and the city clerk and the city attorney. All three of those work directly for the city of Hamlet, under the city council, because we appoint them. And we can terminate them. But in this organizational chart, it indicates that our city clerk comes under the city manager. I think it ought to come under where he says the mayor at the top and city council, city attorney under the council. I think to the right of that, it should be city clerk.
I think I just fixed it. Does that look better?
Yeah. Well, that's what I think it should be, only because, and I'm, only because it's the city charter's request or it's our duty to follow the city charter. And the city charter clearly says that the city council hires three people, city manager, city clerk, and city manager, and the city attorney. And therefore, I think it's correct as it reads there now, in my opinion.
Okay.
So, as it reads right there, I would, I would go along with that, with that chart.
And you're making a motion?
Organizational chart.
Are you making a motion?
Ma'am?
Are you making a motion?
I think he did, but I was, before you made it, I wanted to make that.
It was maybe, go ahead.
All right, well, I'd be glad to, I'll make a motion that we accept the city chart, the city organizational chart that's prepared by the city manager. I make a motion that we approve it as it reads there on the screen.
Thirty.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right. Item number nine, fee schedule.
This was going to be a little tougher. I, you know, I'd like to start with, I hate fees, I don't like taxes, I don't like raising rates on any of our citizens.
John, can I ask one question? The reason you're doing this is to help balance the budget?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
So again, trying to finalize our budget numbers, and I cannot finalize budget numbers until our fee schedule is formally adopted. We've talked about previously the recommended rate increases or additional rates that we hadn't had before. Our water and fee rate, we were recommending a 10% increase. Still with a 10% increase on our water and sewer, we're barely breaking even on our revenues. With the upcoming wastewater treatment facility that will be constructed, we will not be able to afford that loan with our current rates. This has a minimal impact on the average citizen. I think you can see it changes it and cents and/or a couple dollars on the base charge. But overall, we looked at these and it was a minimal upgrade or a minimal upcharge monthly on water and sewer rates. So again, looking at a 10% increase on there, which again is very minimal, we are looking to, we have a lot of meter tampering charges. And based off of the recommendation of the water department, we've asked for increased rates on our tampering charges to help, to help prevent people from going into that second, third offense.
What are we doing to collect this? How are we collecting the tampering charges?
Those get collected, I mean, at the end of the day, like, if their water, if their water gets turned off and then they turn back on, then water department, the meter, they go back out, turn it back off, and then they're not allowed to turn it, they put a lock on it, and they're not allowed to turn it back on until they pay for it.
That's not what I'm really talking about. I know I had somebody in my neighborhood, they stole so much water, it wasn't funny, and they cut the line off. Then they stole water from their neighbor and, but how did we collect the tampering charges on them? We probably didn't, did we?
I think that was before my time, and I don't have the answer to that.
Yeah, but I'm just wondering, yeah, we didn't get it, did we? That's what I thought, and that's what I'm wondering, how do we go about prosecuting these people and collecting the money? That's my question.
Well, I would hope-
I mean, we could charge them $1,000.
I would hope that was an extreme case, though, and, you know, the majority of people, they get a lot put on, they pay it and move on.
I think people need to know because I had to pay one one time, and that's when it was $50. Because I owned a piece of property in East Rockingham, I thought I could turn the water on, pay for what I used, turn it off. I was tampered. I didn't realize I was, but they let me know for $50 I was.
And Mr. Clue, on that, there's the fees that we're charging and locking it, but if you have an extreme case, it can actually be charged as a misdemeanor, and in some cases, it can be charged as a felony. Of course, you have to have the DA's office willing to prosecute, but I've seen that occasionally used when you have really serious cases.
Yeah, and that's my, and I'm sorry I interrupted, but I'm just wondering how we collect these fees. I understand if it's somebody's house. I know they don't have a choice, they're going to have to pay you or not have water, and I can understand that. But what about these people who just here, there, and everywhere, and, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm just wondering, I mean-
We're talking about that, we're talking about that.
And again, you, what I, I want to really clarify is that any fee increases that we have, all we're trying to do is cover the cost of doing business so that the city is not losing money on the services that we're providing. For instance, water tap, $1,000 plus cost of supplies, that is, we don't make money off of that. What ends up happening, and if we do make money off of it, is very minimal. That is the cost of the tap, all the supplies, and then the cost of the personnel to go out there, dig, do the work, do the connections, and it becomes costly when you send out a utility team out there to do that, and it takes a day or two, or I'm not sure how long it takes to do an actual tap. But these are, these costs are actually minimal compared to other municipalities as well. That covers the 10% increase for water, our sewer in East Rockingham. The garbage, we've talked about that, as well, and our sanitation. And with our current rates right now, we're not even breaking even, we're losing, we're losing money every year when compared to the cost of our sanitation department. And if you took in account the cost of vehicle maintenance, buying new vehicles, some of the other stuff that, you know, a wreck that happens or insurance pays out, or, you know, all these things, that becomes even, even more costly. By increasing just $3 on our residential and $4 on our business, that brings in revenue, depending on if we contract or not, and I'll talk about that a little bit more, between $80,000 up to $170,000 annually for, to put that money back into the city. The trailer rental, again, recommendation from the, from the public works department and some clarity. And then some of our fees for, uh, that we didn't have indoor soccer registration, which was a new program, software registration, new program, not increasing those fees, just adding those for, for those services. And then, uh, from the public works director, he recommended a ten dollar late fee registration, because they're having a lot of issues with that, where people come after registration is closed, and it puts them in a, in a position where they're doing a lot of extra work while they're also trying to get ready for the season, depending on, you know, which of the eight there are. Uh, additional fees for pop-up market, these wouldn't go into effect until April twenty-sixth. That's fifteen dollars for each vendor, twenty-five dollars for food trucks. Our administrative fees, uh, just increase those a little bit, just to cover, again, the cost of, of doing business. Same with our zoning fees. And then there were several fees that, that we as a city did not have. And when you, but we have that responsibility of that work. Uh, so, when it comes down to our planning department and the cost of McKenzie to do the work that she's gotta do on an annexation or a special use permit, these are minimal fees, uh, that somebody would pay for to have her do the work to bring that to council. And then I believe that is it, and pending any questions for, for me, I'm willing to answer any of them.
Oh, I have a question on your sewer rates, John.
Yes, sir.
It's, the sewer inside the city is, uh, determined on how much water you use, correct?
That is correct. Well, you have a base charge.
Right.
And then the, the additional is, after that, is based off of your sewer, uh, rate that you're using.
The water you're using.
Water rate.
Yeah, cause we don't have no way to, to meter sewage. Okay, so, in the city limits, it's almost seventy-two percent of the water? Seventy-two percent, cause we got twenty-two dollars and seventy cent is our water, and the sewer for the first amount is sixteen forty-five, if I'm reading that correct. Is that correct?
For the base charges.
A base charge water bill would be thirty-nine, thirty-eight dollars and, well, thirty-nine dollars and
You talking for outside of the city?
Ten cents. Correct?
If I, if I understand what you're saying, yes.
Yes, in other words, the sewer and the water be thirty-nine dollars and whatever is our base charge, for minimum. If you don't use no more water than up to five thousand gallons or whatever. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of. Uh, the other thing I have is, and I know this is gonna stir up a stink. The cemetery plots at Mary Love Cemetery. We have to take care of that cemetery. We can't do it while we're charging for that cemetery plot.
What, the four hundred?
Four hundred dollars. I got two cemetery plots in High Point, North Carolina. They're fifty-four hundred dollars apiece. So, four hundred dollars is not, we need to do something about that. That is not enough. We can't open and close a grave. If we're, if we have to open and close the grave, we can't do it for four hundred dollars.
I think that if we, what I can do is take a, a note of that, Councilmember Clue, and, uh, my recommendation would be if there's additional rates, uh, that we wanna look at, let me do the study on it from now until our, our next meeting, which we could add those in.
I'm not talking about go up to five thousand dollars.
No, no, I understand why you're saying.
Nobody to say, oh, yeah, he'd recommend we go five thousand dollars. No, but I do think we need to go up. And I just, I think that's way too cheap. And we have to have somebody up there taking care of it. We did have volunteers, but I don't know how much volunteers are doing now, and I appreciate them doing it. But that's just not enough for a cemetery plot. So, you do what you need to do, and we'll go from there.
Well, since you brought up cemetery, I'm gonna bring up something that brought up to me. It's about the pop-up trucks that we have at, uh, these events we have coming along.
Say that one more time?
The pop-up trucks that come in and serve. And these, I've had, the food trucks, I've had a couple of, of people come to me that run, says, uh, they come in, pay a few dollars, or however much they paid.
They pay twenty-five dollars.
Pay twenty-five dollars, come in, they take our money and go out of town. Is there some way that we could come together and get a program, or some way for them to spend the people, to spend the money in our, uh, to them, to our, the people we have, the business owners?
I, I can, I understand what you're saying. Uh, you're saying that outsiders are coming in, they're getting city money, and then they're taking it back to their communities, whether they live in Laurel here, Lumberton, or Rockingham or whatever, and then they, they spend that money there, not in the city of Hamlet.
Correct.
I think this is a, a, an issue that all municipalities struggle with, uh, especially when it comes to, uh, um, food truck vendors. Well, I, I mean, you could look at it as just small business owners, period, because you, you could have somebody that, uh, that, that opens up a business downtown, but they don't live here. They don't pay taxes outside of their, their personal, you know, business, um, that, that they have to. Uh, so it's kind of the, the same thing. I think it's part of the nature of the beast, right? It, because, you know, say I wasn't city manager, I, I lived in Moore County, I could come in here, open up a bu- business, make a half a million dollars a year, and then I turn around, and I don't spend a penny in Hamlet. I turn around, I go spend it all back in, in Moore County. Uh, and that, so, my point is, I think that, uh, regardless of it being a brick and mortar business, per se, versus a, a, a mobile vendor, uh, we're, we're probably dealing with, with the same issues across the board, and, and I don't think legally there is a, a way to, to tell somebody, hey, you earned your money here, this is where you're gonna spend it at.
For what it's worth, Mr. Sellers, the city of Jacksonville, North Carolina, the past year or two had some restrictions on, I think it's food truck signage, and a court pretty much put an injunction on that, and it's exactly this issue that, that the manager's raised, is that it's difficult to legally regulate between sort of folks in the city and folks coming in from out of town to do business.
Re-unuppriced, okay. That answers, that's just questions that were brought to me, and I thought I, I wasn't gonna mention it, the big T here said it brought up his, uh, his remarks.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
I'll just say that, I, I appreciate you doing this. As a economics major, you know, and sitting on council, unfortunately, sometimes you gotta take out feelings and, and talk about what's good for the city. Also, like the council members to know, if there's ever times where, you know, we require things from the state, funding, all kinds of things, they look at where your, where your fees are. They look at to see if you are up to par, or are, or if you're subpar on your fees and why you need a loan, or why you need certain things, so clearly, we'll get calls, and we, we have to be ready for that, but to my fellow council members, I, I, we have to, we have to be at minimum, at, at a place where we can keep the city alive. So, I make a motion that we adopt, um, the FY twenty-six fee schedule.
Do I have a second?
I reluctantly make a second.
I reluctantly make the motion, but I make the motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Alright. Item number ten, sanitation RFQ results.
Uh, council, we did push out for, uh, after our last meeting and discussion, possibility of, um, contracting out for sanitation. We did seek letters of interest, uh, for solid waste services through the RFQ process. We did only receive one, uh, bid back. Uh, um, with, with that being said, it, it was Tetter, which is a Richmond County LLC, and they're based out of Rockingham, which isn't Hamlet, but they are close neighbors. Uh, and, uh, they're an extremely reputable, uh, trash service, to include, they, they service all of Fort Bragg, North Carolina, that's a huge community.
That's impressive.
It's bigger than.
That's impressive.
It's bigger than, uh, I think it's bigger than Rockingham, actually, and it's definitely bigger than, than Hamlet. That being said, you know, the intent is to create that mutualistic partnership. Uh, it's where the, the city of Hamlet still offers, you know, curbside pickup, but it takes some of the, the stress off of the city, and allows us to contract it out, and we reduce those expenditure and increase our, our revenues to cover some of the, the costs and some of the deficit that we have ongoing right now. Um, after talking to, uh, Tetter specifically, and then looking at some of our positions, you know, our, our intent is, again, if we are to negotiate a contract to ensure that all sanitation employees have maximum opportunity to either transition into other city positions, uh, number one, or be directly hired by Tetter to continue doing the same thing that they, they've been doing, uh, just under a, a private organization versus municipal government. We did look at comparable rates, and remember I said I was gonna kind of come back to this, but our, even our increased rates, um, that are now the eighteen and twenty-four are much, much lower than surrounding municipalities. Um, I think the closest one to us is, is Southern Pines, and I think they're actually the only one out of all of those that are, uh, contract service as well. So, to maintain our current status quo, which thankfully you all just approved the, the fee schedule, we were losing approximately eight thousand dollars, uh, annually. Uh, the increased rate to the eighteen and twenty-four with no contract will bring in, it's approximately ninety thousand dollars, give or take, uh, in, in, in revenue. If we maintain, or I'm sorry, if we contract out with Tetter with the rate that they've proposed, we would bring in approximately a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars in revenue that would decrease a large por- or not a large portion, but a small portion of that deficit, and help us put that money back into the city and other places. And then, I already kind of talked about this. So, I'll, I'll go to pending, pending questions. Um, my number one recommendation would be that we go into negotiations with, uh, Tetter on the contract, and, and see if we can come to an amicable agreement, um, moving forward, and a contractual agreement, uh, so that we can fix some of this, this, uh, budget issues that, that we're looking at.
How long would the contract run? With Mr. Tetter?
That would all be in the contract, um, negotiations, and then what would happen is, now that we've done the RFQ, and we've got what their current, uh, bid is to us, uh, which was, uh, a great, then we would go and do the fine detailing, and then before that was signed, it would come back to council. Council has to adopt that contract in its entirety.
And on that, Mr. Sellers, contracts I've seen with other municipalities, they often run three years or five years, cause, and they have a little bit of built-in increase for their rates, but I think the, the private trash haulers are concerned about being able to predict much farther out than that, so that's what we typically see.
I got you.
And eight thousand dollars loss is just, it doesn't include trucks or anything like that, does it?
No, I think we just spent, uh, what was, two, two hundred thousand on a, two hundred and forty thousand dollars on, on a truck. Um, there's, there's several trucks, you know, down, down at the, uh, public works department, all, which Tetter has also said that they would like to, uh, bid for, those would have to go up on the, the public auction, uh, if we decided to get rid of those, but, um, uh, there, there is a big chance that we can recoup some of the cost of doing business over the last, you know, couple decades, and then put that money back into our general fund, uh, for, for those emergencies. Um, different fund, but, you know, similar to our, our recent situation on, on Charlotte Street, where we had to pull, uh, uh, monies out of that in order to repair the sewer system.
Well, is this up for a motion to go with Mr. Tetter?
This is up for a, a motion to direct me to start negotiation with the city attorney to, uh, begin contract negotiations.
Sounds like to me this would be a benefit to the city.
Absolutely, absolutely, Councilmember Mark.
Be a big, big benefit.
I think there's always, you, you know, and I try to think about it, I never want to bring anything to council that I would question, and, and I, I'll be the first to tell you what my, my concerns are. My concern is an increased rate by the contractor, um, that we can no longer afford and puts us in, in a bind, or that we have to raise our rates. Uh, so that's where in the contract and the length of it comes in, into play. Um, and, and to ensure that if there are increases, incremental increases, that they don't hit us with a huge increase, right? Um, because at the end of the day, if we were to dissolve the department, and we were able to get rid of the vehicles and recoup that money, well, in three or five years from now, if they say, hey, we're doubling your rates on you, um, we would want to make sure that, that the contract protects us from that, so that that way, we can, we can, we don't get put in a bind to where now we gotta have to go buy four brand-new trucks or four used trucks and rehire all these personnel and be put in a, a really bad position. Uh, again, Tetter, great reputation, um, I, I've talked to him several times, I, I, I think that they uh, understand the position that we are in as, as a city, and I understand their position as a personal business. And I think that we're able to bring an amicable agreement, you know, in a contract to council for final approval in the next month, i- if you all direct me to, uh, start negotiating that contract.
Well, I think, I think that Tetter reputation is beyond reproach, in my opinion, and, uh, what would happen if, uh, if the business would go, would fold?
I'm sorry, sir.
What happened if it go out of business? Would have to take it back over.
We would either take it back over, or we would, we would reach out to, there are other, uh, um, contractors out there that are, they're good. I mean, you have Meridian out there, you have some other ones, they got good reputations, there's one out in, in Troy. Um, but, you know, buy local, sell local, and this opportunity came up, and I'd rather take care of our Richmond County family than, than outsource it outside, because it's gonna, it's gonna be good for everybody.
No doubt about his ability and what he would do. And if, I'd make a motion that we give the city attorney permission to proceed with the negotiation.
The city manager.
City manager.
To negotiate a contract.
The city manager, I mean.
Negotiate contract.
Do we have a second?
Just real quick, Tetter, who do you, uh, service in Richmond County so far?
So, we currently, uh, we service all around Richmond County, for anybody outside of city limits. We also service Allen County, Hanson County, and, uh, Rockhampton.
Yeah. There's no doubt that they're gonna do a great job, in my opinion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Item number eleven, A1A Water RFQ Results.
Uh, this one's fairly simple. Uh, as you all know, we were awarded three hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our water, uh, our water grant, and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, for a wastewater grant. That is to map out our sewer and water system, find all the kinks, all the bad stuff in it, and then come up with a ten-year, uh, capital plan for us to be able to execute. So they, they map it out, they, uh, they record everything that they can within the system. And again, then they build a capital program that goes from most critical to least critical for repairs. Uh, so, that three hundred thousand dollars is split between two grants, and So that three hundred thousand dollars is split between two grants. I'm kind of wrapping up two items into one. And we did send out the RFQ. I did receive RFQs back from Withers Ravinol and LKC. The ability to to weight them against each other is very difficult because they're both extremely reputable. However, with our current wastewater treatment facility and our current water treatment facility that's being handled by LKC, I scored LKC as the higher candidate over Withers Ravinol, believing that since they're already working on the main systems, it would be good to contract out with them to do the 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 remaining of the the system as well. With that being said, and paying questions, similar to the Tetter contract, I'm asking for a motion to approve LKC as our engineer of choice to move forward with our water asset inventory and assessment. And the same would go for our wastewater if you all approve that as well.
Make a motion to authorize city managers to negotiate a contract with LKC, I believe it is.
Negotiate.
For the water.
If you wrap it up into water and wastewater.
Do we have a second? All right, all in favor? Any opposed?
Again, that final contract will come back before council.
All right, next item, number thirteen, request for funds, system development fee study.
I believe I spoke to council about this, either in personal conversations or we may have talked about it during one of our, during our budget retreat. But most municipalities have what's called a system development fee. We don't have any system development fees. This is a fee that's imposed on a builder or developer, whether it's residential or commercial or industrial, and it pays for the impact that it's putting on our water and sewer system and for the future of it to expand. In order for us to create system development, development fees, statutorily, it has to be done by either a certified engineer or a certified financial officer. We had met with a certified financial officer that had quoted us at twenty-five thousand dollars to conduct a system development fee analysis and they essentially do the work. They work with our wastewater treatment facility, our water treatment facility. There's a bunch of calculations that are way above my head and that that are done and then they come back and propose those as fees for the city. Again, it's not a tax. It's not, it's not a, it's not a burden onto our residents. It comes at the cost of expanding the city. So right now, when we look at our water and our sewer and kind of the issues that we have with this, Charlotte Street's the perfect example, you have system development fees. It helps mitigate those effects because now you have a developer or builder that's paying a fee upfront that that goes into that enterprise fund and is for specifically the expansion of our sewer and water system and the future.
And we don't have state people that'll come into the cities and give that as a service.
No, no, statutorily, and I have one sixty-two alpha dash two oh one. You can see where it says it's imposed with respect to new development fund. And I want to, I want to get to one specific part, which I think is is prepared by a financial professional or licensed professional engineer, statutorily.
Right, but I was just asking, wouldn't the state have people employed that could come do this for us free?
I wish.
State ain't gonna do nothing for you free.
I I wish we could and I I was talking to one of my mentors about, you know, some of the some of the our water and sewer and trying to find solutions. And the first thing he asked me, and this is a very long-term city manager, he said, hey, do you guys have system development fees? And I said, nope. TC knows the city manager very, very well. And he was like, you guys need system development fees. It's worth the cost of doing business.
And what I'll say is you want it in place before you really start seeing growth because if you don't have the fee in place with the study done to back it up, then you can't just charge it when that subdivision comes in. And these studies are good. I have to go back and look. I think it's three to five years. Then you have to get it updated, but if if you're anticipating any kind of growth, these are really important because these are fees that are in addition to tap fees and the other things that Mr. Trujue was talking about.
They provide a service as long as they cost, as long as you can pay for it.
The last thing that that I didn't bring up and I want to make sure that I cover is that system development fees will also help us with the cost of doing business on our wastewater treatment facility. So we have to take out, or we're taking out the eleven million dollars alone that we're going to be paying back over forty years. These system development fees can be used towards helping pay for that as well.
Forty year long?
For the wastewater treatment facility to go from one million to two million. This was, this was done before my time. Are you familiar? We have the water treatment facility that's currently engineering right now and we have our wastewater treatment plant doubling in size because we were in moratorium.
All right, do we have a motion to either approve or deny?
I make a motion to approve. Approve.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, item fourteen, FY twenty-six budget update.
So I just wanted to go over the summary real quick. There, there's a couple of things to this that we really need to identify. On Thursday, the county, from my understanding, I don't have the final details, will be reviewing and make a motion on the fire fee per structure or to go to a tax fee. I recommend that myself and a a council member or the mayor attend that. I I think our voice needs to be there, especially when it comes to our fee per structure. Right now, forty-seven percent of our fire calls are going into the county specifically, which after doing the analysis of the budget, that fire fee per structure needs to be approved and doubled in order just to cover the cost and that is no penny more, no penny less. That just covers the cost of the services that we're providing to the county. This is not a, this is not something that affects Hamlet city residents or ETG, ETJ residents at all. This is strictly county and right now I have that accounted for in here along with our SRO that is at RCC. And both of those conversations to talk our SRO's salary and to talk the fire fee per structure are gonna be talked about and hopefully decided on Thursday. So saying that, if you are to look, this is our proposed from the, from the department request, which we would have balanced the books with one point two million. After cutting everywhere I could and trying to find every penny I could, I've dropped the budget by ten percent. And and if that fire fee per structure is approved and the SRO is approved, we would be able to balance the 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 books with a hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred dollars out of the general fund. I don't think that's been done for the city of Hamlet in probably a decade. I think it's balanced with a little bit more than that generally and and last year was balanced with one point six million dollars, which we're currently tapping into heavily. So I just wanted to to discuss that. It's not a a motion or anything. I just wanted to tell you all where I'm at at the budget. Worst-case scenario is that if the fire fee per structure did not pass and the SRO was not paid for in the total amount, I would come back to council and and we would need to discuss the the way forward from there and I would seek guidance from from council on on what we're gonna do moving forward. There's one other thing on that. I did talk, talk to the mayor pro tem. She did ask if there was any way, she is not, obviously not here for this meeting. She's not gonna be here for the June meeting either. And she asked if we could make a motion to have a meeting next Tuesday at five PM, just as a budget meeting. I will have the budget ordinance ready for you all. I will have the proposed budget ready for you all and I am ninety-nine point nine percent sure that I would bring the budget in its entirety ready for adoption next Tuesday if if we could make a meeting next Tuesday at six, or five PM, five PM specifically, she stated.
And she would be here for that meeting?
She would, yeah.
Seventeenth.
Twentieth.
Twentieth. So number one, we would know the fire fee per structure. Number two, we'd know where we are on the SRO so we can discuss those two things. And those are our little adjustments if I need to make them in our budget to adopt it. But I think either way, we're in a good place because it's either we adopt it, appropriating it or or using, balancing it with a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of our fund balance. Worst-case scenario, we would adopt it at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is still, you know, one-third of what it was balanced with last year.
All right, so do we have a motion to have a meeting May twentieth at five?
Some move.
All in favor? Any opposed?
May twenty-first.
Twentieth.
Twentieth, sir.
Do not.
What time?
Five o'clock. All right, item number fifteen, city manager requests for leave.
Apologize that this didn't come to you beforehand. It was something that mayor and I had talked to before I'd started and it kind of slipped through the cracks, but I had planned a trip to Columbia with my partner and she's been beating me up about not coming and officially asking for for leave. So I'm requesting officially leave from the twenty-seventh of June through the sixth of July for a trip that we had planned last year. And, yeah, any questions?
Well, Columbia, South Carolina, you should be back in.
That would be. That's Cartagena, Columbia. That's Columbia, not Columbia.
You need a motion on that or what?
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the leave time request by the city manager.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
I'll continue to to update council too and you all have my calendar, so I'm not. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out. And in my absence, obviously, McKenzie's here and again, she's, she's a rock star and I I think she'll do great things regardless of if I'm here or not.
All right, city managers report.
Just a couple of things that. Apologize again. Just want to thank Alan, you know, for what he's done with the public works. I know everybody can see my quick notes, but Alan's done a great job and I don't know if you all have been down on Charlotte Street, but being able to execute that contract as fast as we could with a special meeting and the cost of doing business, remember you all approved up to four hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. We spent a hundred and sixty-two thousand. So we, we were able to do business at a much more effective cost and I attribute a lot of that to 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 our assistant public works director, Alan. He's an outstanding young man that's gonna be a great public works director someday. Our, our wastewater treatment plant, I'm gonna bounce around here just real quick. It is out for public notice and that's for the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant from one million gallons to two million gallons. Our water treatment plant had been sent out for bid. The problem is, is when you have a a bid that that goes out, that that's, that's that big, it's millions and millions of dollars. Legally, on the first time you push out for bids, you have to receive three bids back. We were notified today, last minute, that we were only gonna get two bids. So we are pushing back out for public notices again to try to get another bidder. Statutorily, if we do not receive a third bid then, then we can open the two bids that that we did. So just wanted to update you on that. We were pushed to the right just a couple of weeks on receipt, being able to open our bids, but currently we do have two bids on the water treatment facility. Our, and I already talked about this a little bit, but currently our our UDO is in progress. We've been meeting with Chad Meadows from Code Write. Met him, I think, three, four times by now. They are, they are moving very fast in the hopes that we have a unified development ordinance by this time next year, if not a little bit later, probably July next year. Our trailer purchase, unfortunately, they sold it from out under us. Just wanted to update you on it. We are currently looking for the same trailer at the same cost, just, just waiting till that vendor gets one in, but we were not able to get that one that we had earmarked before. And then, last thing, I know our, our mayor sees this, but this Friday, we got two big birthdays. We got Doc and we have Mayor Gwen and then next week, we have Ms. McKenzie, I think Wednesday, right?
Don't be shy, Doc.
Yeah, she's got a budget meeting for for her birthday. But just wanted to send out a big happy birthday to everybody because it's important and you guys matter, so happy birthday.
Thank you. All right, comments of council. Mr. Martin?
Well, I had a lot to say, but this flyer that y'all put out says it all. It's the opening game for the Hamlet America Legion, post forty-nine baseball season on February, I mean, Friday, the twenty-third this coming, or next week. Opening ceremony will be at six thirty PM and we will be honoring all the firefighters in Richmond County and we have the state fire marshal gonna come down from Raleigh. He's gonna throw out the first pitch. Free admission to all. We've invited all the firefighters, full-time volunteers and retirees. I hope they all get this message and try to make arrangements to come to the ballgame on Friday, May the twenty-third, by six thirty. Game time at seven. Pre-game ceremony at six thirty. Hope everybody comes, enjoys the game. That's about it.
All right, Mr. Sellers?
No comments.
All right, Mr. Close?
I have a couple. Remember Robert Brown's family? Robert's wife is, she's had some surgery and she's been transferred to Duke or Chapel Hill and from what I understand, she's gonna be in there about thirty days. So let's keep Robert's wife in our prayers and Robert, because I know this is trying time.
We, I'm sure the baseball field's gonna look good. Doc's been working on it and the geese have been fertilizing it. So, I'm sure, I'm sure it's gonna be in good shape. But we appreciate everything everybody's done and we thank all our employees for working hard.
Mr. Stewart?
As always, thank you all for showing up. I'm always on my soapbox about education and the importance of education as an educator. And to go hand in hand with that, of course, mental health. May is National Mental Health Awareness Month. And mental health is, you know, just as important, if not more important than physical health. And so, I just want to bring the awareness that mental health is health. And so, please make that awareness out in your communities, in your homes, with your kids, with schools. We have so many children that we're having those, those issues in mental health. So, please, please make that awareness. Also, in the essence of showing honor to my father and many men in my family and many men in this room, it's National Military Appreciation Month, so kudos to you guys. And, you know, we thank you so much for, for all that you do and have done. And happy Memorial Day to all the citizens of Hamlet.
All righty. I too am going to acknowledge National Military Appreciation Month. We have a council member who served in the military. We have a city manager who retired after 20 years in the military. We have Mr. Latimer, Mr. Wallace, right?
Yes.
And probably others here who have served in the military. And being so close to Fort Bragg, which is a large military institution, and Camp McCall, I feel like it's, it's appropriate. So, in observance of National Military Appreciation Month, I would like to take a moment to honor the brave men and women who have dedicated their lives to protecting our freedoms. Their courage, selflessness and commitment to our nation are inspiring. To the veterans in our community, thank you for your unwavering service. You have not only defended our country, but have also enriched our city with your leadership and sacrifice. To those actively serving and to the families who support them, I recognize the unique challenges you face. Your strength and sacrifice make our community safer and stronger. And I'm proud to stand with those who serve. I'm committed to supporting our veterans and military families, not just this month, but every day of the year. And as mayor, I extend my deepest gratitude to all who wear the uniform, past and present. Your service is a powerful reminder of the values we hold dear, freedom, courage and sacrifice. So, thank you. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second. All in favor? All righty.